Call this meeting to order the Board of Franklin County Commissioners. It's Wednesday, October 26, 2022. It's 8:30. If you have any electronic devices, please put them on silent and if you please stand after -- wait a minute, just after our roll call, Dennis.
Commissioner Stottlemeyer.
President.
Commissioner Harris.
President.
Chair Dunn.
President.
Vice Chair Dickinson.
President.
Commissioner Waymire.
Please stand now for the vice delegations and stay standing for an invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the House of Representatives. I mean nothing but states of honor. In two, one, in the business. Good morning. I am Kalen Bones. I am the Administrative Assistant at Hope Anthem Church. My leadership that today comes from Jay Oswald Sanders, and he said, "True greatness, true leadership is found in giving yourself and service to others, not having others serve you." So I just want to encourage us today to remember that we're serving others. Let's pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you that we get to come here today and that we get to meet together. God, I thank you for this amazing leadership team that you've placed here in Franklin County, and I pray that you just give them wisdom as they go through this week and help them serve others well. It's in your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Any correspondence today? Derek?
No, sir.
Okay, public comment. I know we have a lot of citizens here. You got to talk about the hospital, I'm sure, so I'll just read over our instructions for public comment. A citizen desiring to speak on an item not on the agenda may do so at this time. Discussion is limited to five minutes, and the commission will not take action or discuss items at this time. Discussion should be limited to matters of county commission business, and public comment is not permitted in regard to personnel matters or impending legal matters. Items introduced into public comment may become agenda items at a later date. But today, I know a lot of you here on the hospital issue, so we will make some comments on that. But now open up public comment right now.
Carl Kelsey. If you could come up and state your name and address, please.
Good morning. I'm Carl Kelsey. My address is 4162 Kentucky Terrace. Mr. Dunn is the county commissioner who represents my district. And I talked to Roy on the phone yesterday very graciously. He turned a call from me about this issue that he just brought up, this situation with the Ottawa Family Physicians and Advent Health. And as a real concern that I have here, the one question I would like to ask is, do we own this hospital, building itself? I'd ask Mr. Brown, since he's the man that probably signed the lease on this.
Mr. Kelsey, go ahead and give your comments, and we'll comment afterward.
Perfect. Okay. I'd like to know, too, it's my understanding that we pay a half-cent sales tax here in Franklin County, and that money also goes to the hospital, and it raises a quote that I've heard of, about $2 million a year that we subsidize the hospital with. The third thing I'd like to know is, does this commission or anybody from Franklin County have a seat at the table of the board of directors at the hospital? Do we have anything to do with saying who and what happens? A little bit of back history, when Advent Health moved in here, and when the two-cent -- the half-cent sales tax was first promoted, my mother-in-law, who since passed on, Esther Lennis, took her personal time and went all over the neighborhood out there where we live and asked everybody to vote for it. The simple fact of the matter is, she was a nurse in World War II. She was one of the greatest, a part of the greatest generation, and she believed that we needed a hospital here in Franklin County. And I believe the same. And I think with Ottawa Family Physicians' history of supporting the people in Franklin County and the hospital itself, for the past 50 years, that deserves some consideration. Now, folks that are at the administration of Advent Health and the current administrator, and I'm not sure who it is, doesn't make any difference who it is, perhaps are not aware of the fact that that hospital was built primarily with donations from folks in this country. If you look back at the history of Ransom Memorial, which I still choose to call it, there were a lot of folks here in Franklin County that put a lot of money in that hospital. And I am concerned deeply. This morning on KOF, I heard Brad Howard and their news director state that Ottawa Family Physicians and Advent Health couldn't come to an agreement. And I choose to not accept the word "couldn't." I think the proper word phrasing should be "won't" or "wouldn't," because I think there's, irregardless of any kind of a situation, there is always a way to come to an agreement that makes sense for the people of Franklin County. I've been doctoring with Ottawa Family Physicians for about 30 years, ever since I moved here in this county. I've always found them to be exceptional as family physicians. And one of the reasons I suspect that I'm alive today is because I used them in 1996 at that hospital over there when I had a heart attack. The short and long of this is, we need Ottawa Family Physicians to still be a part of the administration, whatever it's going to be of that hospital. The letter states that they are no longer going to be the person that goes around and takes care of them on a hospitalization, what they call a hospitaler event, which simply means they take turnabout, going over there every time and giving their day. I'm sure they're remunerated somewhere or another for that. However, the second part of that thing that concerned me in the first paragraph of that letter is, in the very near future, they're not going to be able to administer, admit anyone to Ottawa Family, from Ottawa Family Physicians into that hospital. Recently, my wife fell. She broke, I don't, not sure "broke" is the correct word. She hurt herself on the knees, because when she fell, she did that. Went over to the emergency room over there. I thought the emergency room person, doctor that was there, was very cavalier. She stood from me to that door over there and didn't introduce herself and say, "Get an MRI, get a CAT scan, get a X-ray." Came back in about 45 minutes or now and said, "You're okay, go home." And that was the total experience I had with that hospital. Went to my family physicians. They said, "She probably needs an MRI. We'll schedule one, but we have to schedule it with the hospital." Now, MRI is not a, not a very sudden kind of thing, but what they told her was, "It'll be a month before we can get you in." That is nonsense, because if you walked in the emergency room and they said, "Get an MRI," then you wheel down the hall and you put in an MRI at that point. I believe that this kerfuffle we're having right now with Ottawa Family Physicians and the hospital has been an ongoing situation for a while. And I believe that the fact that they won't, and I use the word "won't," come to an agreement, is the fact that they're not Advent Health doctors. And I can't believe that. There's no reason in the world that folks here in Miami County, in Franklin County cannot go to their own hospital. Every time we buy something, when we go to Walmart, when we go to Oslin's, we go down to town to eat, we pay, as you and everyone in this room knows, that half-cent sales tax. So each of us has a bonded interest in what's going on at that hospital. My suggestion would be, if we have a lease agreement with them, and it's an ongoing lease agreement, as most are, and every year it's renewed, so if it's five years out, we renew it at the annual event, and it's still five years out all the time. I think the next thing we should do is look very closely at an ongoing agreement with them, because I don't want somebody here that doesn't want me back there. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Kelsey.
Sandy Stannert.
Good morning. My name is Sandy Stannert. I live at 923 South Willow. I am a lifetime resident of Ottawa, Kansas. I have practiced in one way or another as a nurse practitioner, RN, and a certified nurse's aide since 1958 with Ransom Memorial Hospital. I am here because many other people couldn't be here. I am a speaker for them, and asking that you give us some answers, because we're having trouble finding answers. We're hearing from all kinds of people about the lack of care they're getting, the in, well, it's a hard to find, I'll find a word for it. One of the things that started this recently, more of an outcry, was October 7th, when we did hear that Ottawa Family Physicians no longer had admission privileges, except they can deliver the babies in the birthing area and take care of those babies as long as they're under a month old. So if they get sick and come back, but if they're two months old, they can't see that baby. Now, that's a, not a continuous care, which we should all be allowed to have, a continuity of care, that they're not jumping and peacemaking us all through the place. We've had questions about a lease, and we thought that the commissioners had signed the lease. If you did, we'd like to get a copy and review, what are the terms, what are the length. In checking further, found that there's a possibility that the commissioners made a resolution whereby they turned over the lease and any type of agreement with Advent Health. They're the ones in charge of it. Now, we found out, they also have two boards. They have the old hospital board, which is five people, and then they have the new board that's only Advent Health. And when we tried to get in touch with them, they were told the community cannot attend their meetings. That's a no-no. The community's been upset about RMH being leased with the idea that if you lease someplace, I've leased properties, and I have statements in there, "You don't hang pictures. You don't put in, add-on a room or anything without the stipulations that you contact me." And the first thing they did is tear down all the signs. They've done all sorts of things that there's no history, no reminder that we were RMH, down to the menu, that if your patient in there, which I had a complaint not too long ago, he likes bacon for breakfast. They served him turkey bacon, because they're, they're basically vegetarians, and he was very upset. Was Advent Health checked out by anybody? Because I know in the past that we've been approached at the hospital for affiliations with Olathe, and I believe KU Med Center One Team, a research hospital, that we would do an affiliation. It wasn't a lease, but they would help us with management for a fee. I checked out Advent Health and found out, basically, they're a nonprofit, tax-exempt corporation, and due to their status as a 501(c)(3) tax code designation for their religious affiliation with the Seventh-day Adventist Church. And I'm getting a lot of complaints about that, because I don't believe this should be a religious hospital. This is why it's been a community hospital. We do not just, not everybody in this town with the number of churches we have. I would say probably Seventh-day Adventist Church is one of the smallest ones they have. Another concern is about the half-cent sales tax, which was already mentioned, at the average of $2 point million, or $2-plus million dollars a year. It's never been under $2 million. When I did some research on that, I think that's been in place since June of 2015, prior to Advent taking over. It was to provide stable revenue stream for RMH and crucial resources to assist RMH to provide care within the county. It was, and we wondered at that point, and was there a specification, I'm sure that's on the law someplace, I couldn't find it, of how that was supposed to be used. I think we understood when we voted for it, that it was to be used for infrastructure and equipment upgrades or purchase of new equipment. I don't know what they're doing with it now. You know, they get that money as a subsidy, and I can tell you for sure with that tax-exempt record, they are doing a lot of things with money that maybe we shouldn't be giving them, if they could do better. The biggest concern right now, the thing I have heard the most, is about the declining care available locally. Access to care is very difficult, just like the gentleman before me said, talking about the MRI. I'm getting complaints from women, because my practice used to be women's care plus, and we did specialty in women's care. If I needed a mammogram, yeah, it may be a week or two before I could get it scheduled, depending on who else was scheduled. But if I felt a lump and that person needed a mammogram, they got it that day. We didn't wait two weeks. Now, women call in and they say, "Oh," in fact, my cousin called in last week for her mammogram, which was due this month, October, or, well, she called in before October, but for breast cancer month. And so she was told, "No, the earliest we can get you in is at the end of the year. However, we can send you to Kansas City to one of our other facilities, and they can see you in two weeks." Now, that's not right, and they're doing that more and more and more. Possibly, and some of this may be hearsay, but it's my understanding that they don't have a regular mammogram technician, except Mondays and Wednesdays at the hospital. They don't have anybody who does CAT scans, except Tuesday and Thursday. Two days. We've always had these services, five days a week. Plus, if you needed it, we had local people who were employees that could come in in an emergency. So that's, that just doesn't make sense on why they're cutting staff. And they are cutting staff. They're also having staff that are resigning because of the conditions and the complaints that they get from that, so. Then I heard that some of the places that I thought were staff cuts, no, they have been rearranged, and our good people that are working over here, like maybe checking in patients or is billing or something, are working from home, and they're working for Kansas City from home. They're not, we don't have their ability to help us here anymore.
Sandy, can you wrap it up pretty quick, get your final question about that?
My last thing is, I found out that Advent Health, one of the ways they're spending their money, they are a supporter of NASCAR, and for NASCAR people who are fans, it's my understanding, that's a $10 million minimum a year. They also pay more in the Kansas City area for marketing than any other healthcare, all other healthcare providers together. And I guess I'm coming to the community this morning, or the commissioners this morning, to say, "We have problems," and you probably all have received reports of problems, but this five minutes has been too short. I'll cut it out. But we need a full investigation as to what they're supposed to do. They are joint commission accredited, and there are standards. And if they don't provide the services, inpatient is fine, but outpatient is not good. So hoping that this will raise some interest, that we can get a public hearing, that you all can check more into the lease and what they're doing with the money, particularly the tax money. And I thank you for your time.
Sandy, Sandy, I want to congratulate you to be honored by Ottawa High School as being on the wall of honor for Ottawa High School.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good morning. Okay. We've, I'm glad we consolidated kind of the comments concerning the hospital. Appreciate the input we got. Derek, could you give a little overview on the subject?
Yeah. One, I appreciate the feedback. Certainly, this is something that my staff and I have heard a lot about over the last month. We understand the community's concerns. We feel the community's concerns. Frankly, we agree with the community's concerns. We're worried about what's going on as well.
Please, if you have a moment.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. Is that better?
That's better.
Okay. Yeah, thank you for that. Mr. Kelsey asked a question, and I'll try to address all of your questions. If I don't, then please feel free to ask me. I want this to be helpful. Does the county own the hospital? So the county owns the hospital in name only. Like, we own the real estate. Having said that, Franklin County is not involved in the operations of the hospital, and we're not, because we can't be. Like, it is against the law for the Board of County Commissioners to dictate how a county, and it seems counterintuitive, but the Board of County Commissioners cannot dictate how a county-owned hospital runs. They have to appoint a board, and then that board, by law, is tasked with governing the operations of the hospital. I don't know when the RMH board was established, but it was decades ago, and that RMH board is who was tasked with running the hospital. Now, among the duties that the law gives that board is the authority to lease or contract with another organization to run the hospital. That is what happened during that affiliation process. The RMH board made the decision to affiliate with Advent Health. You mentioned a lease and a resolution, and those do exist, and I'll gladly get you copies, but frankly, I'm not sure. So the RMH board, they asked the county to basically bless the transaction. And, and back when that happened, I don't know how many people were on the RMH board, but they unanimously, I mean unanimously, we, this is what we want to do. We want to affiliate with Advent Health. They asked us to bless it. That's what our resolution effectively did. That's what our lease effectively did. We don't have a lease with Advent Health. Franklin County has a lease with the RMH board, and it's really the, the lease between the RMH board and Advent Health, which I don't have a copy of. That is really the lease that's governing, I believe, what is going on over there. So I say all of that to say, this board really has never had any say in operations, and that continues to this day. Now, you mentioned dual boards. My understanding is that is absolutely correct, that as part of the affiliation process, the RMH board was largely stripped of its authority, that it now has the say over how the sales tax is spent, but the rest of the hospital operations, my understanding, are governed by this new board that I, I mean, the county does not have a representative on it. I don't know if there's a community member on there. I'm not competent to say that, but I know that we don't have somebody on there. The sales tax, yeah, it's, Ms. Stannert was right. I've only got three years of it here, but it's been over $2 million all three of those years. Most recently, in '21, it was about $2.4 million, according to our records. So my understanding is they've spent that largely on capital improvements and what is being called charitable care. Now, exactly what that consists of, I don't know, but that's, that's the reports that we get from Advent.
Sales tax was put in there by the voters, and it's kind of an unusual sales tax, because it doesn't sunset.
Right.
Pretty much any sales tax we ever see has a sunset day. This one is kind of unique in that it doesn't. Part of the way it was voted on, the verbiage on the ballot when it was voted for, it goes towards the operation of the hospital. We have no control over it. The voter put it in. It's a county-wide sales tax. Yes, that's the area it covers, but we don't control it. It's explicitly for that purpose. So for good or bad, it also keeps a bunch of politicians from taking it and putting it towards something else, but it's exactly for that.
Ms. Stannert asked the question, was Advent Health checked out by anyone? I have no idea. I will tell you that the county was either intentionally or not, I don't know, but we were kept out of that process until the very end, when the decision had already been made. Like, we, we were asked for our blessing at the end of it, but in terms of what kind of due diligence was done, how many organizations were looked at, you would have to ask a member of the RMH board at that time, because that just, that did not involve Franklin County.
Is the RMH board public knowledge, the folks on it?
Yeah, I mean, we appointed them, so yeah, it would be public knowledge.
Do you have a list of them?
Not as I sit here, but certainly can.
A list of them now, or a list of them back when that happened?
Both.
Yeah. I know there are still members on that board now that were on it back then, and certainly, yeah, we could get you their names. That's, that's not a problem. You know, one of the, the issues that I've had trouble with, you know, I'm getting a lot of calls about this particular dispute between Advent and OFP, and I'm getting a lot of questions that I'm not qualified to answer. Like, I, I don't know the, I mean, I've got a very vague overview. It's a contract dispute, but I don't, like, that is a dispute between two private companies. That, that just doesn't involve the government, and nor should it, arguably. And so I, what I've been telling folks is, you know, I get questions about OFP's letter. Well, reach out to OFP and ask them, and because I don't, I just, we were involved in that dispute, and that's not an indictment on OFP. It's not an indictment on Advent. The dispute didn't involve the government, so we wouldn't have been. So I, unfortunately, I don't feel like myself, my staff, the board, like, I just don't feel like we're competent to answer questions about that particular dispute. But the sales tax, I think, is absolutely fair game, how that's being used. And again, I just talked to an, I just talked to what I will call an RMH board member this morning. He assured me that they are still overseeing how that money gets spent, that, that they get requests and they have to approve of those requests. But that's, I mean, the sales tax is basically the county's, I mean, only real tie to the hospital, despite it being a county-owned hospital. So, so what, what didn't I answer there, or what else can?
Hospital board meeting this Thursday at 4:30? My understanding is be there before 4:30, because there are lots of people. If you have a patient that's upstairs, it's been admitted as you, and you want help, and you or if I'm a grandparent with a new baby, I have to go through the emergency room. Somebody has to escort me through two large floors to the elevator. It's closed down like a prison. It's not community. Hospital, the RMH, Ottawa, the RMH.
No, that, so that, that's Paul Bean. And Paul, I know, and I know you're okay with this, because we talked this morning, but is the meeting tomorrow at 4:30?
Yeah, I'm on the community board, which is, not the, the board, that's all these decisions. That's all these decisions.
Paul, you want to come up to the microphone?
I'll try to do this, so I'm not facing... I'll just turn my back to Derek.
Okay.
Sorry, Cole. I'm on the community board. We meet at 4:30. They'll actually, the doors close at 4:00. So you...
It's 4:30.
Yeah, the meeting's at 4:30.
No, but the doors don't close till 4:30.
Is it 4:30?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, 4:30. I was wrong. But the community board will meet tomorrow, and what the community board does is basically listen at a point in time when the hospital has decided, okay, we know what the sales tax, this is what we're going to build in our budget next year. Here's how we'd like to spend it. They bring that to the community board, and then the community board provides input and oversight on how those funds are spent. So, as was mentioned, a lot of it is spent on capital improvements and also what I would call welfare care. So, if there's folks that get care that can't afford to pay for it, some of those tax dollars help those folks with those healthcare expenses. So, the meeting tomorrow, there wouldn't be any information about the contract or any of that. It's... That's basically about the regular board, not the community board. Our only role is basically a sounding board on the sales tax expenditures. And we meet... I'm sorry.
Clarify this community board. Is that what we consider the whole RMH board?
I wouldn't...
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
It is.
It is.
How many are on that board? Five?
I think it's five. I think that's right.
No, I think it's more than that.
Is it more than that?
Yeah.
Trying to think around and around.
It's five or seven, yeah.
Yeah, five to seven of us.
No, I think, yeah, seven. I think seven.
I'm sorry. I just got back from vacation, so I'm catching up. Pardon me? On our board, Anne is on that board as a county commissioner. She's...
I'm not on the board.
She's not a board member, but she's the representative from the commission. And then John Cohen, Janet Peters, Eric Duderstadt, Crystal Anderson.
Betty Berzer.
Betty Berzer.
Dr. Frank.
Dr. Frank, yes. I think that's the group.
No, and then from... Duderstadt, did you say Duderstadt?
Yeah, I said Eric.
Oh, sorry.
Dr. McCullough on the board?
No. I'm happy, if you have other questions for me, I'm happy.
Can we have a copy of the lease agreement? Copy of the lease agreement that was signed?
No, we're not involved in that. We're just over the sales tax part.
But you... Signed when you were on the board, was there not?
Not the community board on the lease, no.
Yeah, so, yes, yes.
It'd be before.
It would be before the affiliation, but the RM... My understanding is that the RMH Board, which was then the governing board that the county commissioners appointed, did execute a lease with Advent Health, yes.
That should be public record?
Yeah, I think so.
How do we go about getting a copy of that?
Yeah, I'll reach out and see.
We can find out.
Any other questions, Paul, about the... That kind of arrangement? You really don't have any control over the care or the process of care, or the quality of care, or the timeliness of care. That's Advent Health.
Thanks, Paul.
I know we did answer everybody's questions, and you probably still have more questions about this situation, but...
Well, I...
I think our situation is that the contract is between our family physicians and Advent Health, and those two entities need to get together to do what you folks want them to do.
Happy to get you a copy of the resolution that we executed and the lease that we executed. Happy to follow up with my recollection of who the board members were at the time, and I know I can get all of those names. And if you call me, I will pick up, and I will listen, and I can assure you of that. I'll try to answer your questions, but again, the county's role has always been far more limited than I think the public generally perceives. Yeah?
One legal question.
Okay.
Because this is a dispute between two private parties. As a civil...
Yeah.
Okay. As a taxpayer, if I'm a part of this absent sales tax, do I have a standing in that?
That is actually a very complex legal question. As I sit here today, probably not. Your recourse is, as I've told you, the county's connection to the hospital is the sales tax. You... Your standing is you could petition that to go on the ballot, and you could ask the community, I guess, to vote on whether we want to keep that in place. Like, you would have to follow the legal procedure to do that, but you have that standing or that ability.
That wouldn't be where I would go with it first choice, because I think that $2 million donated to the hospital is money well spent, one. And I have said sales taxes, in this day and age, taxes go, absent sales taxes, what do you miss in a school? The other part that really concerns me is the fact that these two parties are disputing something that affects me directly.
Yeah.
Then everyone in this room, directly. Doctor sent you to the hospital?
Get it. And I feel like I led off my conversation with, we are concerned too. There's nobody that likes this dispute, but there's, you know, you're just going to have to reach out to those entities and try to get answers from them. But I'll pick up the phone, and I'm glad to talk to you, and we'll try and help as much as we can, but there's just... We're just not a party to it.
We have a order, Jack. Can we go to the hospital?
Sure.
About our doctor?
I don't know.
That's dumb.
That's what's going on in the area of hospitals. It doesn't make right for our community.
I just reflect on counties because I thought, and I still believe this is the ideal solution. It's the ideal place to be. Far enough away from town, a large state. Although it is, I think it's drawn, not that I am completely... In this kind of situation, ex, majority of United States cities, of the towns. And your options, I understand only we can let... I don't have any... Our options is... Third... We exercise some principles. I want to get a lot of lawyers involved.
I'm not offended.
The moderators are down between two parties, so let's get this sorted out. Let's get this sorted out. There's no reason that we can't come to a logical conclusion. Go back to what they said on camera this morning. And couldn't come to an agreement. Couldn't is the key word. Couldn't come to an agreement. Because individuals, like, if you need several things, one of which is contracts. Politicians above us, current representatives, Kansas Legislature, federal legislature, United States Senate, send it to them. This is what's going on, and these people are... Fix it. I'm keeping...
Well, we'd like to have the... Advent Health and auto family physicians come to some sort of arrangement somehow. That's my goal. That'd be my goal, my hopes, I guess you'd say. I think we presented to, presented the legal side of it and the arrangement side of it. Got one more question from the back. Come on up.
Now, I'm going to have to have my back to you, so sorry. My name is Harmat Bibi. I'm actually one of the hospital. Can you hear me now? My name is Harmat Bibi. I'm one of the hospital administrators, and so...
Can you still hear her? Because I can't. I don't... Yeah, turn.
Can you hear me now?
Is that better?
Okay. Start over. My name is Harmat Bibi. I'm one of the hospital administrators, so I wanted to be here today to be able to listen to some of your concerns and be able to address them. I think that a couple of you referenced that there is a letter that has gone out to the community, and I can help clarify some of the information in that. I think that there is a lot of misinformation that is floating around regarding, you know, the questions that you raised. If I have a heart attack, can I go be admitted, and can my doctor see me? The contract that the hospital had in place that is being referenced as far as the dispute was related only to patients who do not have a primary care provider. And so, as it relates to OFP physicians seeing their patients in the hospital, they voluntarily withdrew their privileges to no longer see patients. The hospital never once said you cannot see patients here. So, I just wanted to clarify that point. We, the hospital, welcomes all OFP physicians to see their patients, to admit their patients. In fact, we wanted them to continue to do that. Like I said, the contract that we had was only for unassigned patients, not for their own patients, only for those that do not have a primary care provider. When we looked at the contract, we found that the contract that we had in place was in violation of federal laws, and so we had to propose a new contract to them that was not in violation of federal laws. That is a contract that they chose to not accept. And so, when we say choose, or wouldn't, couldn't, it was, there was a choice that they chose to not accept. We cannot do anything that jeopardizes the hospital's accreditation or anything that violates federal laws. And so, that's what the... To be more specific.
The hospital offers a... Not compliant with the law?
The contract that we had in place for the patients who do not have a primary care provider was not compliant with federal laws, the hospital's contract. And so, we did need to address that issue. And like I said, to be specific, that did not impact the care that OFP has been providing for their own patients. So, for any of you that are patients of OFP, that contract did not relate to your care. I just would like to reiterate, we, the hospital, has been very appreciative of the care that OFP has been provided, and we would like for them to continue to provide care.
We did contract with them, it's hospitals.
We did offer the contract to them. They chose to not accept it.
There is some place that you can meet to build.
We, the proposal that we gave them was the absolute top of the line that we could legally give them.
And dollars it's in because you're not office, right?
That has nothing to do with our non-for-profit status. These federal laws apply to all hospitals, all facilities, whether they're for profit or not. Correct. For patients who do not have a primary care provider, correct. I'm going to keep that information between us and them. If they would like to disclose that, then that's on them, but as referenced, the contract is between those two parties. What I will say is we gave them the absolute top that we legally could give them. And so, we... The situation evolved due to what we could and could not do legally. And just to kind of put it in perspective, when we found that we were in violation of federal laws, we actually had to go disclose to CMS that we were in violation. So, we did not take this lightly by any means. We actually had to go disclose to the government to say we had a contract that is violating laws, and there's repercussions for us as well from that, and so we did not enter into this on a whim.
You need to understand, Mr. Haley, with much of folks out there looking for mention, you'd like to protect our home, yes? I mean, I'm the gentleman as our own.
Understood. Understood.
Looked at our doctors, that's our... Irregardless of what situation is now, and the problems you guys have. Best solution is for you two guys to sit down, leave the law, the monitoring, and everyone to...
That was also our intent. Our intent was for them to continue to be hospiceless and provide services, and that is what we had attempted. We are very open to that.
I understand it is... Auto family physicians, they said, no, we're not...
Now, like I said, the offer that was given to them was the absolute maximum. It was not someone from Florida. I mean, we certainly had many compliance and legal officers, including internal and external, involved in making sure that we're not doing anything to violate the law, but it wasn't... Someone came in and said, we gave them our best offer, the first offer. We... That we could. No. No, it was based on fair market value compensation for the services that they are providing. I'm sorry? Correct, but our hospital is accredited by during commissions, so we have to follow all CMS regulations. Yes. We are providing outpatient services, and yes, we are still accredited.
All right. I need to interject here, please, for a second. Are you representative of Advent Health?
Yes.
She's the financial officer.
Oh, okay. Thanks for coming here today. I think we need to get on with our business, and you guys can...
Absolutely.
So, as the public, as a public, can they come to the meeting tomorrow?
Absolutely.
That would be the place for you all then, too, because as up here, we can't answer those questions, but they could.
I'm glad to see the flow of information going back, going the other way. I think we'd be happy to facilitate that, even if we needed to offer this room, but not as a county commission meeting, because it's really not... We're out of this. I think that, to the extent that there's a public concern or that we're concerned, the... We established the meeting that's open to the public tomorrow. That's the RMH, the community board meeting, the one that deals with the tax dollars, right?
Correct.
Not the Advent Operations Meeting, the one that, the board that deals with operations of the hospital.
Correct.
And that is a closed meeting?
That is a closed meeting, yes.
Okay. And the hospital administration, even back long before the affiliation, has always kind of been the clerks, the steward... The documents created from the RMH Board, they maintain those, retain the documents and all that. So, that's still the practice?
Yes.
You would make the, I guess, the documents these people want available, the affiliation agreement available to them?
If, I mean, I want to say yes, if that's the correct avenue for it, yes, or whether it needs to go through the county, whatever the correct avenue is.
Okay.
But I believe, as you stated, it should be public.
Yeah.
Public documents, so...
Well, within sunshine law, yeah.
So, whatever the appropriate avenue is, yeah.
And you've been here, you've been here for the meeting. You've listened to the comments and... And you've been here, you've, you've been here for the meeting. You've listened to the comments and, and, and so that will help. You can go back and at least. Share where the community is. So we do appreciate you being here.
Appreciate.
I didn't catch your name.
Harmat Bibi.
Say that one more time.
Harmat.
Okay.
It's a unique name, I know.
Thank you for coming in.
Yep, absolutely.
I hope the two sides can get together here and Sandy and Mr. Kelsey and Mr. Ray. And there are two mates from Mr. Windger, but I know he isn't listening.
Thank you.
They'll get back there coming in. Thank you all for coming in. We're gonna continue on with our business for today. We got the consent agenda. And we just have one item for the consent agendas. Consider and approve Franklin County Commission meeting minutes for October 12th, 2022. I have motion.
Motion for the consent agenda?
Agreed.
Commissioner Stottermeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yeah.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Cheer up.
Yes. The first item up for business is consider for approval of the purchase of the mobile devices for Franklin County Public Works Department.
More commissioners.
Yeah, Dustin.
So as we kind of talked through our software project that we approved earlier in the year, we kind of talked that there could come a time where some of the mobile devices, majority of those being for Public Works. Would need to be acquired to get them going. We came to that time for Public Works and talking with David Lee. He's needing 27 devices to cover all his operations. Let's go ahead and direct this towards me now too, sorry. But with those, he has identified 17 of those that will need a cellular service plan with them. 10 of which are going to be operating as wireless connections only. So to get our costs down with that, since we're going to need cellular service, we reached out to US Cellular, who is providing service to mobiles that we have over in our law enforcement arena. We've worked with them long enough to see what their coverage is throughout the county, which David will be and his staff will be in a similar areas. So we reached out to them to see what type of subsidizing programs they'd had on some of these devices and that brought the cost down of those 17 from $609 to $209 with a two-year commitment. So David's gonna be paying for that cellular service out of his operating budget. We're looking to take care of the cost of the devices upfront with those residual CARES Act funding, much like we did the software to begin with. I've talked with Janet about that. She is, she's already verified that that's all good there. The remaining 10 devices will be purchasing directly from Apple at $609. We have elected to put, make those cellular capable devices in case one of David's go down. They can just swap the SIM card over, be back in operations. Or if his needs change, he can go ahead and add service to those to get those fully functional as well. So that's what you have in front of you. And then obviously a recognized case on each of them, just with the nature of where these are going, we'll try and protect them as well as we can too, so.
Any questions to Dustin? Permanent motion be, approve purchase of equipment from Amazon, Apple and the US Cellular in the amount of $10,290.73.
Motion approved.
Agreed.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottermeyer?
Yes.
Cheer up.
Yes.
Thank you, commissioners.
Mr. Ray, did you have something real quick?
You guys don't speak into your mic. We can't hear you.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me now? Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Now, now you're getting closer.
Okay, thanks.
It's good to know because people listen to us on the, um. On the. And sometimes they say they can't hear us, so that's good to know.
Now you tell us, it's such a better player. Okay, thanks, thanks. Okay, staff report, say, Derek, do you want to go ahead?
Yeah, I don't have anything today, boy. Thanks.
Paul, do you got anything else? Okay.
Good morning, commissioners. Yeah, I just want to say thank you to you folks for being here and for your input. Always, like Derek said, I'm always happy to take a call or have a visit. Cause I'm representing the community on that board, so I welcome your, your direction. So thank you for being here. Just a couple of quick things on FCDC. We, we are gonna have a good crowd on November 10th for Franklin County Career Day. That'll be at the high school. This was the last day for businesses to sign up, so I think I've already got another one since it's been sitting here. So I think we'll have a good day there. You all are invited on November 2nd. Over the noon hour, we're gonna have our annual, from 11:30 to 1:00, our annual FCDC gathering. And we'll say goodbye to our outgoing board members and, and welcome our new board members. We'll have a nice meal. This is all at Ottawa High School. And then we'll get a tour of their VOTech operation there. So commissioners, as supporters of FCDC, you're certainly invited to attend that on November 2nd at 11:30 at the high school if you would like. We continue to, to still get some activity and interest in Proximity Park. We did have one project that we worked on pretty intensively. I got an email today that they chose not to come to Kansas. So right now we're down to about four projects, but still continuing to get interest in, in activity in that regard. So just wanted to share that quick update. Any questions, I'm happy to answer. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul. Kenny, do you have anything for, Sheriff?
Good morning. Just a quick update on our transport van. We contact, the company contacted us. They are waiting just for, they needed something else on, on the camera system. And then our final approval on the graphics and we gave all that, we gave all that to them. So we should be, when they said we'd have it by the end of this month, they're running out of days, but they may be, but they may be getting it. So, so we, we are very close on that. I know that they're gonna use our van at the sheriff's conference here in a couple of weeks down in Mulvane as one of their display models at the vendor show. So, so I know that they at least have to have it done by then because they're, they're gonna be benefiting from that as well. Budget wise, I wanted to let the commissioner know, we do, throughout the year, we're always looking at our budget stuff. We do have a couple of lines that are looking pretty rough. Those are some that we knew would, but overall, our budget numbers are, are still, are still looking pretty good. And some of the way that we're doing that, our part-time, in the jail particularly, our part-time salary line looks really, really bad. But that's because, as we discussed, we were hiring some people part-time instead of those full-time positions. And we're able to, overall, the county sees a, a cost savings on that because those are non-benefit eligible positions. So it does, it does help us. So some of the individual lines don't look good, but overall, we are, we are doing pretty well on our budget. And then also, one of the budgets that we discussed here in the past few months has been our jail trust. And we needed to replace a refrigerator down in the jail kitchen. Those are pretty pricey. We do have the money. That's, we have ordered it and that's gonna be, and we're paying for that out of the jail trust to get that covered. So it's, the main function of that, of that refrigerator is the milk that comes in. And we thought we were getting bad milk. We realized that we had a, had a cooling issue. So, so we've been working with our vendor on that, but that should be. Should, we thought we'd have that refrigerator already, but it should be your, really quick, just wanted to update you all that, that is being paid for out of the jail trust. So that's all I have unless you guys have questions for me.
Do you still have hats left?
What's that?
Do you still have hats, hats left?
Uh, I think we do have a few hats that are, that are left. Those are.
How'd that go?
Those, they were very popular. We had several people that came, that sent us the, the direct messages on Facebook and that called the office. And so we, we don't have a dollar amount yet, but we've been able to get, get some funds raised for the Cancer Foundation. So we appreciate the public supporting our cause there.
Good deal.
Yeah. Maybe you and Janet could answer, but the constitutional amendment on the ballot about sheriffs, could you explain that there?
I can. The purpose of, of that amendment is to take the elected office, the sheriff, and instead of it being in state statute, it would put it in the constitution, which I, my understanding is that it was early, early on when we became a state. But it would just, what it says is that each county that currently has an elected sheriff, constitutionally will always have an elected sheriff and that election will happen every four years. So we have one county in the state that does not have a sheriff's office. That is Riley County. They did away with their, they voted to eliminate that office and they have a county police department there. So this would not affect Riley County at all, but if you have an elected sheriff, then, then that, you will always have an elected sheriff in your county. The purpose of that was so that the public, the voters, get to select who their, who their sheriff is. The reason for the timing on that was because there have been a few counties that have had boards and commissions that wanted to change that and make the sheriff an appointed position. And so that is the reason for that. There's some little bit of confusion as well as how the sheriff can be removed from office based on the amendment. There is a one slight change there. And that is, a sheriff can still be removed by a recall vote and they can still be removed through an ouster process, which is that they are forced legally removed from office. The only change on that is that currently that can, that ouster can be filed by the county or district attorney as well as the attorney general. This amendment says that, that it would only be the attorney general. And that change has the full support of the Kansas County and District Attorneys Association. What they wanted to do was they felt that if the county attorney is the one that is filing that against their county sheriff, it kind of puts the whole county government thing kind of in an upheaval. And so they thought that, that, that removing that from the county level and only putting it at the state level. That was something that would hopefully add more integrity and a little bit more continuity of government by doing that. So that was the reason that, that that part was put in.
Oh, a yes vote would be to change.
A yes, a yes vote just says that it will be in the constitution and is guaranteed to stay that way. A no vote just keeps things the way that they currently are, which is by statute, we do elect our sheriff every, every four years. Yeah.
Thank you.
Are you answering?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thanks, Jeff, for giving us that. Christie, do you, do you have anything? Dustin, anything else? He thought I wouldn't call you, didn't he?
Just want to give you an overall update on the software project, since that is a very large project for us. Back on October 10th, we kicked off the ENCODE or ERP Pro product. That is the financial management tax payroll portion. We've completed an assessment documentation for them on that. We're starting to get some of our users of that system registered into the Tyler community. So that, that will be ready to go whenever we start naming subject matter experts in the project and start getting some of those permissions assigned out. Project Portal is just now coming up. That's gonna be a place for us to do a lot of the communication, task list, keep everything going within the project itself. It's still realistically 18 months out before that is finalized. Kenny and I have been on a kickoff call for the Intergov, which is now Enterprise Permitting and Licensing product back on October 5th. We're kind of holding that to get the, the ERP Pro about three to four months in. Tyler's told us that that really should be the first one up and then these others can kind of come along on it. Fiddler for the Registered Deans, the document management solution for them, kicked off on the 20th. We've done our initial data pull. I sent that to Fiddler last night so they can start working through indexing all those images and that data to get into their system. We're looking at that project manager coming on site, sitting with Sue's office to talk about their processes, ask a lot of questions, go through all that. So that it's looking like we will probably go live with that product in the mid to late January timeframe. As we just did the item here for the Pub Works side, David's got training set up for the 14th to 17th. He's going to be having what I'd call a soft go-live at that point where the advisors are going out to his, his guys. They'll start using those. And he'll kind of keep their processes that currently have in place, utilizing these as well to kind of start working through some of those pieces. But he will be live on the system after that training is completed. And then the last piece that we have is the Orion, which is now the Assessment and Tax Pro. They renamed all these right after we did this. But that one, we have not kicked off or, or started anything with that. So I think we're starting to get some of these really rolling. I'm kind of glad to see that a couple of these will be coming off my schedule at the first of the year. Because I really expect that ENCODE ERP Pro to be the one up front that's gonna require the most effort. But I do think here within 18 to 24 months, we will be completed with all these and hopefully start seeing some of those efficiencies after we start. Through some of the pains to begin with.
Your department actually has probably the biggest task because each department is only working on their own. You're kind of working on all.
Correct.
And, and so you have a big responsibility.
Right now, I'm learning to juggle my calendar more than I ever have in my entire career.
Well, we appreciate it.
Any questions about any of the software projects? I'd be glad to ask, or anything else related to my office, I'd be glad to talk about.
Any questions?
Availability getting better on things you order?
Little bit. Printer seemed to be my challenge right now. With the SRO position down at the Central High School District, after he got down there, he determined that a printer was kind of going to be very useful to have near him. For sensitive things that he needed rather than printing to the office. It took about a month to get that tracked down and I had to go with a vendor that I have not used for our equipment before. Actually had a, Nebraska Furniture Mart was the first one to have what I'd wanted in stock. So had to go through them and I haven't used them for my technology purchases before, but. Other than that, everything, everything's, our traditional computers, these tablets, everything like that seems to be going fairly quickly. I believe it was about a month ago, we had to get some tablets for the AMX department and they were here within a week, so. Overall, I think it's improving a little bit.
Thank you, Dustin.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. David, you got?
I'm gonna continue talking about training a little bit. Dustin mentioned the Pub Works training. The week before Thanksgiving, we'll have folks from Pub Works here in these facilities to start rolling out the, the training. Those tablets that you just approved are a key piece of that training. So really looking forward to that. Additionally, the CDL class that you all approved some time ago, that got started last Tuesday. And, and has gone very well. Our first three students have been through the, the, the first part of the slide. And they are ready to sit for the, the written exam. So that went a little quicker, went a little smoother than, than we anticipated. We anticipated worst-case scenario situation and, and these three breezed through it. And we have high hopes that they'll do well on the, the first exam. And so, once they get through that, we'll transition them into the driving portion, which we anticipate taking longer. Simply because you can only get one person behind a seat, behind the steering wheel at a time. And so we'll, we'll do that on a regular schedule so that they get the time and build up their, their skill set. Rusty Tall has been, he's our Roden Bridge foreman and has been leading that effort and doing, doing an excellent job. So we're very happy with, with that process. Yesterday, we also conducted the annual employee training for the CND landfill and transfer station. It's training that we have to do as part of our permitting process through KDHE. We had SCS engineers, our landfill engineers lead that program. And we had seven staff members, including Pat and I, that participated in that. So that was informative for the, you know, the longtime employees. They hear it year in and year out. So it's kind of old news to them, but it's still good to make. but it's still good to make those topics top of mind so that they are aware as they go about their daily duties. Also, we had four new, four of our new employees go through a snow and ice control training last week that is put on by the Kansas Local Assistance Program. It's a LTAP is what we call it. It's a, it's a training program that's available for all public works entities out there. It's in conjunction with KU and KDOT. They team up to do this. And so that, that's happened last week. And we've got a couple of, a couple of more employees that are going to take a Public Works 1 and 2 course next week. And so a lot of these things are ongoing this time of year. We'll, you know, we're always looking for relevant training opportunities for our staff to build their skill set and just help them do a little better each day. From a project standpoint, we've got really all the normal stuff, but we do have a drainage improvement project that we're working on in conjunction with a couple of adjoining landowners and the local NRCS office on Iowa Road north of Douglas. It's a large drainage area that comes down and really overwhelms our road anytime we get heavy rains. And the adjoining landowners, in addition to NRCS, are working with us to make improvements there. We're going to, we've built the road up. We're adding some armoring. We're going to do some grading and improve the pipes in that area to hopefully have a little better opportunity to withstand some of the flooding that we've experienced in the past. So that's, that's what I've got this morning.
Any questions, David? Dan?
Yes, so lots going on in the clerk's office right now. We're wrapping up the tax season. So I'm just waiting on a few more things from some other neighboring counties to wrap up all of the budgets, getting those put in on the tax roll. So, and then I'll be ready to turn that over to Jody. Jody and I are working pretty closely together on that, making sure that we have those taxes billable by November 1st, which is the, which is the statutory deadline. And so Jody usually works to get those statements out within the first few weeks of November so that people have them for a month or so before their, before that bill comes due. So we're working really diligently on that right now. Also, early voting has started in the office, and we've had two days under our belt now. We've had at least 100 voters each day. Yesterday, it was near 150. So thankfully, I have Sarah back in my office working part-time right now because we definitely wouldn't be able to handle the volume of people coming through the door. Otherwise, we sent out over, around 600 advance ballots in the mail last week. So those are starting to come back now, which is additional volume of work in the office on top of all of the regular stuff. So lots going on right now. So, and you were asking Dustin about shortages of supplies and stuff. We've really been seeing that with paper. Some of the paper that we use for election purposes have been in short supply and have taken longer to get than, than we normally would see. And like some of the paper, I've had to change to use different, different types of paper because the ones that we normally would use are not available. So we are seeing some of that. I am, we are having a shortage of pens right now, too. So I'm waiting on new pens to come for elections. So hopefully, we'll have those by Election Day just so everything works smoothly with our electronic devices for signing and using the, using the touchscreen machines so that people aren't using their fingernails or anything on that to potentially damage the machine. So we're waiting on that, and that's a little extended time also, so.
Would you want to bring us up on the other constitutional amendment that's on the ballot? The, what is it? 5014?
Yeah, so the other constitutional amendment on the ballot is administrative regulations, and that's basically bringing the mechanism to allow the legislature to, to rule on those if they think that they are not consistent with how the law was written or something to that effect. So anyone can look at their sample ballot online. If you go to votekansas.gov and go to the voter view section, you just view your voter registration. And when you view your voter registration, you have your ballot that will, you'll see at your polling location on Election Day attached there, and you'll be able to read both of those questions. So you'll know what they are, and you can research those to see what, what you'll need to be prepared for. There are a lot of judges on the ballot, too, and there is information out there on those, too, if you want to do the research on those.
You kind of clear this in my head, this resolution we're talking about. Is that be an example? If the State Health Department put down some kind of a, like mask mandate or schools, that would allow the PEC legislature to override that?
That's my understanding, that it's for department, state departments that aren't, that aren't under elected, elected personnel.
Excel started? That process?
Started yet, no. But we're, we've got the list compiled. We're actually removing properties from it because they're starting to get paid off.
Good.
Excuse me, back there in the back. Harold or George, wait a few minutes. We'll be done here pretty soon.
Yeah, no, I've been a kind of, those two resolutions, I thought maybe need to be, a lot of people don't, you know, know the background on what they say. A lot of times, they don't know what the yes means and what no means. I kind of need to check with your side and, you know, educate yourself a little bit, how you're voting. Just because you vote yes for something or no for no, it ain't really what, what you think it is. Went to the, of course, everybody will be reporting the KAC conference up there last week in Oldham Park. It was very well attended. I thought, had some very good programs. Couple of things that stood out to me that are just possibilities, don't mean they're going to happen. But there's a lot of talk about on the state level wanting to make it to where they can regulate whether solar and wind in the state of Kansas, not the counties, regulate. Am I right on that or not? But I mean, we still set the regulations, but they sat down whether it could be in your county or any other county.
That's what I understood, too.
Yeah, so I mean, that's a very careful move on a, that it isn't out there yet. But it's a KAC, and the Klick County Comis, Nate County Commissioners are, are talking about it, that, you know, you want to listen. And another one is, there's a couple of people that are talking. I don't think this is, it'll ever pass statewide, in my opinion. But they're wanting to go to paper ballots and no automatic counting machines, period, anywhere in the state of Kansas, which I can kind of see, maybe if you got a little bitty county, two or 3,000 people or something, but not, you know. I got no problem with ours, and I know, and many representatives that come out of Johnson County, they vote on things that won't happen because they, the Johnson County Commissioner was at that meeting. We was at, they had 250,000 ballots they had to count by hand and mark and correct, and they had 27 different things to vote on so that each one of them had to be counted.
Can I, can I just add something to that? So yeah, obviously, the bigger the county, the more concern is for hand counting. But I do get a lot of questions on this. And the state of Kansas, any equipment that's purchased now and has been for the last number of years has to have an auditable paper trail. So a lot of people get concerned about the touchscreens that we use. They are all, they all print out a paper ballot that you can read, and it is not counted until you see it, you look at it, you verify it, you put it in the counter. So you can see who exactly you voted for, and that is an auditable paper trail. And so then we are required by state statute to audit a certain number of races after the election. So, and those are determined, those are determined after the ballots are all submitted. So we don't select that before. So no one knows in advance what races we're going to audit or what precincts we're going to audit so that nothing can be skewed in advance. So then we do these, these audits. And when we do it, well, when we did it in the primary, we set it up right in the middle of my office in the front where anybody could walk in, anyone could see the audit team counting. And we have to, we have to prove our results. So if we have anything that's a discrepancy, we have to figure out what the discrepancy is, what caused it, and be able to justify it. And we have yet to, we have yet to have a discrepancy other than maybe someone circled a whole candidate, and so it didn't get counted by the machine. But the people on the audit team can see that that person intended to vote for that, and then the results are immediately changed to reflect the true audit numbers. So that's something that we're doing anyway. So we don't feel like going, moving to a full-hand recount is necessary because if any of the audits reveal any discrepancies, then we would be required to add additional audits. And that has not ever happened anywhere in the state since we've been doing audits.
The only thing I did go to is a solid weight authority meeting we had the other day in Mount City. David and I and Pat all went down. And the main hope meeting was basically about our budget that we're going to do in '23. And we went through it, we think, we pretty well, it's going to kept flat. Anything that is going to go over the flat, we're going to take it out of reserve funds that we have, in my opinion, what the discussion was on that one.
Yeah, so we are going to keep our dues request to each of the counties flat, probably for the next few years, I would imagine. But we are, we have increased our expenses because we're having our coordinator work additional hours. A lot of that additional hours is going to be spent being aggressive again and seeking grants to help each of the counties. And I fully anticipate Franklin County being part of that, seeking grants to help us with our recycling operation is kind of where I see it. But, so our coordinator is, continues to do a good job. But we are going to increase our expenses to allow a few more hours to push these things forward.
That's all I got.
Okay.
I spent last week at the KAC conference. I think the longer I'm in the job, it's not like an overwhelming inflow of information. The first time I went, it was like, oh, my gosh, this was, it was just like, but the more I know, the easier it is to absorb, I think. They had some really good, the classes that they had. One of them I went to was on budgeting. And, and there's budgeting, and then there's budgeting during high inflation. And it's kind of, you kind of have to think, do some additional thinking when you're budgeting during a high inflation and have to make some choices. They had Julie Lorenz, who is the Kansas Department of Transportation. She was sharing about some opportunities that are out there. And basically, they don't have the money. They can't get it to you, but the money's out there. You have to ask for it. And so basically, they're saying the opportunity's out there, and you need to go out and get it. They did, they are, they added some things on their website that helps you define what those opportunities are and, and look at your county and see where your county is. I went to your class with Colt on opioid settlements, and we were kind of disappointed in that. It looks, it seemed like it's a huge number overall, but when you look to see what Franklin County is going to get, it becomes a pretty small number. But you realize all the money that the opioids have gotten over the years, and, and those settlements are starting to come down. Went to one on employee retention. I did go to the legislative review, policy review. And basically, it shows, it kind of puts where we at the KAC stand on different issues. And so when they come up, then our legislative council can go in and tell them, we don't agree with this. And hopefully, that will help sway any votes. I did go to the K-Camp and K-Work annual meetings. Both of them are actually in pretty good position financially. K-Camp did say that what they were going to charge is going down. The only problem is values are going up. So it's still going to cost the counties more, but what they're charging is less. And I think that K-Work actually hired a retired sheriff on their staff to help facilitate training for sheriff's departments to help with their workman's comps. Then the, on, that was just one day, that was Monday. Then, oh, no, I still went. And then I went to the Women's of KAC on Monday, and they actually had a really good program on Amelia Earhart's journey to the nation's capital so that now we have a statue of Amelia Earhart at the Capitol. And, and it was a pretty long process, but very interesting. On Monday, on Tuesday morning, we had the KAC business meeting. And then we had speakers from the Department of Commerce and the Kansas Housing Resources. I went to a couple more meetings on Wednesday. We had our KCCA conference. And our, the Southeast Kansas representative, the Southeast Kansas County Commissioners representative did not seek reelection. And so I was voted in to finish out her term. So I will be serving on the KCCA board. And one of the reasons I really wanted to do that is because when the state legislature has things like that coming down, you want to be able to, you know, be, have a say in it. And anyway, so I'm kind of looking forward to that. The other things that I did, we had a neighborhood revitalization review board last week, and I'm sure that those, we'll be seeing those. I went to a chamber coffee last Friday for the Franklin County Historical Society. It was exciting to be in that building and see what they've done with that because they've moved into the visitor center. Had a fourth judicial district nominating committee meeting. And we do have four candidates for the magistrate judge in Coffey County. And we'll be meeting in November to interview those candidates. The city of Ottawa is moving forward with a splash pad. And I think by next summer, you'll see a new splash pad in City Park that will be available to the citizens. And they also approved a general obligation bond. And the last thing is, it's almost November, get your flu shot. And that's all I have.
That all?
That's it. You ready to go? I'm sorry.
I think I and Don covered a KAC meeting pretty, pretty good. And like Don said, in our Kansas Association of County Commissioners, when it came up to hand-vaulting the big counties, they weren't too happy with that kind of situation. They, they want to stick with electronic counts, and electronic counts have been accurate ever since we started using them. So going to, want to talk, big money. If we had to hand-count everything now, what, the people would have to hire to do that. It would be.
Johnson County said that they had to, they were audited for the constitutional amendment, and it took them like four days just to hand-count that one thing. And when you're, and when you're looking at the ballot for eight hours, the chances of you making a mistake mentally by just, you know, over and overlooking at the, you know, is probably a better chance of having a mistake than having a machine that can automatically do that.
Also, I'll just add that not all races are in the same order on every ballot. So the more ballot styles you have, the, the more like order discrepancies that you have. So when you like look at this ballot, the first one is this candidate. On this ballot, the first candidate is a different candidate. So you, as you change from different ballot styles, you have to know who's, who's in what order. So you can't just say, top one gets one vote, second one gets one, you know.
Anyway, that's an initiative the Commissioners didn't like too well. This coming weekend, it's This coming weekend, you'll see a lot of change downtown. All the flags will be put up around City Park and around the courthouse and the parade will be a week, week from Saturday, Veterans Day Parade. And one thing, there's a Veterans Initiative to light up your courthouse green to show support for veterans in your community and Ian was looking into that a little bit on how to do that and, and we're going to look at that. Possibly you can have a strobe light that's green that would shine on the courthouse at night or something like that. So, that's kind of a new twist to Veterans Day events. Like I said, the parade will be on the, on the 5th. That's going to go different, it's going to go from Forest Park to City Park and then there'd be all the displays in City Park for, for the people to look at. Of course, Veterans Day would be on the 11th and the closing ceremony is tentatively planned for the evening of November 11th, which is actually Veterans Day. So, all the veteran stuff is, is being planned at this time. I don't have anything else and I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
No move.
Thanks everybody for coming today. It was kind of a...